And are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will do roll call. Paul Cassidy.
Here.
Tanya Hogan. Here. Jerry Golka.
Here.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Beverly Rose.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 1K, the purchase of a new sewer lift station panels for the DPW.
Second.
I second it.
All right, perfect.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. And I want to amend the agenda for the... Where can I find it? For the deputy supervisor. You've got two items on there, one for the assessor.
Yes.
And the other one for the deputy supervisor.
Do you want to split them?
I want to split those out.
Okay.
Please.
Then why don't we make it A and B? Do you want to do that? Let's keep it under...
Yeah, 1B, 1B, 1B.
Unfinished business, we'll make it.
Do you want to do the deputy supervisor, 1A, and the assistant assessor, 1B?
Yes. Your second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, we'll go to public hearing on the township draft budget. The budget is fairly close to, I think, with our numbers.
You have to say, "Open it up at 6:02" or something.
Pardon me?
You have to say, "Open the public hearing at 6:02 PM."
This is a public hearing, it's open.
It's 6:02.
Make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:02.
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Does anybody have a comment on the township budget that they would like to be, make known?
Artie Bryson, 8356 South Channel. It's hard to have a public meeting on something we know nothing about. We've gotten zero information. And we, how do we comment on something we haven't seen? Thank you.
Is it on the website, Tony?
It's on the agenda, it's in the agenda page.
Is it on the website, the link?
No, I did not get it in time to upload it to the website.
We had a meeting this morning where we did change some of the items and we can go through it. And if Mr. Bryson or somebody wants to make a comment, they can.
If you pull the agenda up on the website, you can open up each one of these individually.
Yeah, each department.
But Tanya was saying it wasn't there, that's what I was saying.
No, it is, it was there, on the website.
Oh, it is there, then you can see it.
Why don't we, why don't we do this, though? Why don't we let Jerry go over some of the changes that we made this morning?
All right.
Jerry, you want to go through it?
Yeah. Okay, we'll start with the, with the general fund. Some of the changes we made on that in the budget we didn't have were the franchise fees for the cable companies that pay us, they pay us about $90,000 a year in franchise fees. So that was added in there. Also, in the budget is, we added on some monies for a pole barn to store some of Lance's DPW equipment, as well as our new stage that we're going to get, the fire department's boats, and anything that we need. We need a lot, we need more storage, so...
Is there a trailer on that?
Yeah, and there's a trailer on that, too. That's...
That was in water, yeah.
Yeah. So it's split amongst different departments. We've got Parks and Rec because of the stage that's coming. We've got DPW covering some of it. We've got the building department covering some of it. So we did it in $50,000 budget increments, $250,000 to build this pole barn, 80, was it 80 by 100? Pole barn, to store all this stuff for all the departments. Okay, and after we did all that, we wound up, our revenues are going to be in the general fund, $2,193, $283. Appropriations, $2,110, $2,110,448 for a surplus of $82,835. And then the cemetery fund, that one there is kind of a wash, in and out. Okay, and then we had a lot of talk about the fire department. Right now, use of funds on that is going to be $139,240. We're going to have to address that with, you know, the next quarter and amend the budget. We've got to figure out what we're going to do, what we're going to cut, how we're going to do this. But right now, use of funds is going to be $139,240. That's, we're in the red on that one. On the police department, estimated revenues is $4,379,000. Appropriations is $4,250,379, which leaves a use of funds of $250,000. Chief Koch, he has that in his budget to pull out of his use of funds. It's for our new command station for, that they're putting into the police cars and that, where we'll be able to talk to other departments. And it's a big upgrade in system that's needed. The old system, the person that owned it died, the kids took it over, and they're not doing that great of a job with doing our needs that we need for service and things like that. Okay, and the parks, again, we added $50,000 in there for the pole barn. But after doing all the budgets on there, we're $929 to the good on that with revenues and expenditures. The ambulance fund, that's kind of, it comes in and goes out, it'll be a wash eventually. Garbage and rubbish collection, it was said that there was some savings in there. I don't understand it because we're $159,031 in the red on that one. So we're going to have to do some negotiating with the garbage contractor and try to limit that, because that's a lot of money to come out of the use of funds. Fragmites, that was about $3,000 in the red. We're going to have to up some of the, for the chemicals, to zero that out. So I've got a zero balance on there. We're going to take a look at that one. Downtown Development Authority, we put the $50,000, they're going to donate some of the, for the pole barn. And with the revenues we'll get from there will be $213,305. We should build a bank for DDA. The revenues are $329,855. Appropriations, we're budgeting $116,550, which again leaves $213,305 in the black. Drug law enforcement, revenue is $9,500, appropriations $9,000, we'll have about $500 there. Sewer fund, we have the bond in there, cash, capital outlay improvements over $5,000. We budgeted $4,000. Looks like we're going to, revenues, $6,281, $6,281,587. Appropriations, $5,245,467. It's going to leave us with a $1,036,121 for emergencies or, you know, broken water mains, things like that. The sewer fund, we're looking at $10,977 in revenues. Appropriations, $10,976,501 in appropriations. That's to save us about $900 in the black on that one. And then the Harsons Island Sewer, the LG Wheel, question marks. We don't know where that's going right now, because we're getting all kinds of numbers out there. And we're not going to saddle the residents with any extra money than we were accounting for last year. Any comments, Paul? Any comments from the audience?
So, Tanya, I just want to ask, this was, you know, without the changes, it was on the website when you put that?
Yes, it was in the agenda page. It was on the agenda all, since Thursday.
So you'll update it with the new numbers?
I will, once I get them.
Just so people know, okay.
And I'll post it.
Yeah. The only thing not on there is our discussion about chief ropes.
Okay. Yeah.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:12.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Public comments? An agenda item only.
I respectfully ask that the board amend tonight's agenda to discuss the OHM contract and set a clear expectation that the board will not authorize any further payments under an expired and unapproved contract, and will place this item for formal vote at the next meeting once all trustees have had time to review the facts and legal concerns in full. Trustee Burchard publicly stated at the last meeting...
Ma'am, I respectfully request that you sit down, please.
I'm asking...
You're not going to stand there and say, "I want to amend it," and then start talking about it?
I've asked, well, you...
You're not going to do that, ma'am.
And you don't want to know what I wanted to amend it for?
You have three minutes at the end of the meeting. You can talk about anything you want.
Okay, well, I disagree with you, and I do have something regarding 120 St. Clair Avenue. How about that? That's on the agenda, correct?
If you have something on your agenda...
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Regarding 120 St. Clair Avenue, Harsons Island, and the Funkies. Every property has history, and this one is no different. The property had been owned by Carolyn Cameron's husband and his family for generations, and they fully expected to keep it that way. Mrs. Cameron, a wealthy widow who had no children but a family who loved her very much, lived in a retirement home in New Baltimore for many years. While employed there, Mrs. Funky met the elderly Mrs. Cameron. As the document stated, the Funkies acquired the subject property pursuant to a quick claim deed that the elderly Mrs. Cameron executed on November 19, 2019. Several months after that, on August 29, 2020, Mrs. Cameron died at around 92 years old. Oh, I don't think that Mrs. Funky has employed at that retirement home anymore. Thank you.
Hello, Artie Bryson, 8356 South Channel. I just want to make a comment. I see you have casualty insurance renewal proposals. Nickel &amp; Saff has been here for quite a while, and before that, Burnman Flowers for a while. But Nickel &amp; Saff has always given us great service, wonderful service, and they also help sponsor us a lot of events. So if it's close or anything else, I would tip my hat to Nickel &amp; Saff. Thank you.
If there's no further public comment, we move to bills payable.
I support bills payable, the amount of $28,426.29. Payable 6/23/25.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Do a roll call.
Okay. Jerry Golka.
Yes.
Beverly Rose.
Yes.
I stuttered there, sorry. Tanya Hogan. Yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Paul Cassidy.
Yes. Move on to supervisors' report. We're still trying to work through the LG Wheel plant on Harsons Island. It's been an issue before us, and we talked to Mr. Monti last week. Anthony is here from Bennish. I know this is not usually done during the reports, but I've asked him to speak, and he has a presentation to present on behalf of the paperwork we received last time that I felt was too open-ended for anybody to make a decision on. So Anthony, please show us what you have.
Thank you. I'll still take about 20 minutes, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Left the lights off over there? Do you want the lights off, is that what she said?
This one has to turn on. It's starting on.
I thought it was up there. Maybe it's...
That better?
I think it's just the overhead that he has, it's covered in green. Maybe it'll lighten up.
Yeah. So, thanks to Mr. Chairman. My name's Anthony Fiedoro. Some of you knew me when I was the vice president of project control engineering. I moved out to South Dakota, the Black Hills, two years ago, took a position with a company called Bennish. So when I was here, I was a big part of the coming to this concept for the island. I really started out with another algae technology, ClearOS, and I have Kevin McGraw, who was the chief technical officer of ClearOS, and now is the U.S. sales, head of U.S. sales for LG Wheel. And he'll speak in a minute. But I want to just kind of give you a background of how we got here in terms of a treatment plant for Harsons, the appropriation, and kind of what we really want to present and propose to you a little bit better than the proposal two weeks ago. So just a little bit about Bennish, you can go to the next slide. So that's me, I'm going to speak about process design, value engineering, and alternative delivery. And my colleague, Dan Gustella, he's going to speak about construction management, contract operations. And we also have Carl Leeds here from DBM, and he'll say a couple words to his, a couple slides here. Next. So what is our role in delivering your project? We call it alternative delivery because it was a $2 million appropriation that we got two and a half years ago for just the treatment plant, and the hope was that we'd get money for the collection system later. Now we're two and a half years and many percentages of inflation later, and we have to do it all for that, right? So it's a challenge for anyone. So, you know, when that happens, you have to do some out-of-the-box thinking. And so we combine the subject matter of expertise and elegant biofilms with process models to size and configure alternatives to meet project budgets. Our first, our value engineering process is the first input in any of these alternatives. So that's why it's critical that we're allowed to do that, to let that process happen. Once the alternative delivery is chosen, we can offer design, build, operate, we can write grants for future phases, we can do financing, public and private financing, very similar to municipal bond. And then the big thing is contract operations afterwards. And we were founded in 1946 by Alfred Bennish. We're headquartered in Chicago, with 1,200 employees and 51 offices in 20 states. Number 20 and number 51, South Dakota, and that's the one I started when I moved from here. So there's my, I'm using my Angel Pointer I just bought today. And that's where I live now, Rapid City, and so that's kind of our footprint. The other important offices are our Detroit office, which really pioneered contract operations for our company, and our Pottsville, Pennsylvania office, which took our value engineering model, which our chairman of the board invented, and applied it to wastewater. So it's pretty critical. I'm going to blow through this slide because it's a lot of talk, but basically the key concept is SAVE International. And SAVE stands for Society of American Value Engineers. And like I said, our chairman, he wrote books on value engineering, and those books are now used by SAVE International to do the eight-step job plan. Next. So this is the eight-step job plan, and this is what we do when we're going through a process where we're really tight on budget, or limited budget, or we really have to figure out how to make the dollar stretch. Inflation's caused a lot of this to be really important, but functional analysis, after the information phase, what does it do, what does it cost? The speculation phase of what else would do the job, and the evaluation phase of what would be acceptable and what we can afford, really drives the design. Next. So this is where we are right now. We're in what's called mismatch. And so, you know, a lot of times you'll have engineering firms, and they want a really high performance, but to get there, they have to do a really high cost. So that gets you into a mismatch. And so what we want to do is to drive down the cost while keeping the performance. And that's pretty, pretty simple. I know it's oversimplifying things, but when you think about it in terms of the performance of a wastewater treatment plant, there's a lot of ways to skin a cat, right? So performance without, keeping costs down without sacrificing performance. Next. These are the books that our chairman wrote. All of them can be purchased online. SAVE International also has them on their website. Next. So tailored options for LG Wheels. So since I left here, I continued working with LG Wheel for a couple reasons, and I developed three generations of LG Wheel with Kevin McGraw and Dan Johnson and the team. So we have an oil boom in the Dakotas, if anyone hasn't noticed, and we've got work camps going up like you can't believe, and little towns being inundated by people coming into work on the Bakken. So that was what drove me to work with LG Wheel and stay working with them, to try to drive the cost down and the size down. And you're going to see that in the next three generations. Next. So this was the first generation. So when I was still here, they were at this stage of trying to do something, they had precast concrete tanks, it was preassembled, factory installed, the risk was low, but the weight of it's high. Being that we're trying to put something on an island and bringing stuff across on a ferry, this wasn't really the greatest idea, so... And also, I'll show you in a minute, we were trying to get away from the size restriction of that many wheels, because the width is too big. Next.
How big was that?
So that one is probably, so six wheels, so that's three, six, eight, seven and a half by whatever that distance is. I'd say that's probably maybe 40. So it's not that big, but the weight of it is an issue, you know? And the precast, so we're hanging on a truck. So couldn't get it on a truck and keep under the weight limits. Next. So we came up with this one, and this was the first thing that I helped to develop. And we deployed it at the Fox River Water Recovery District outside of Chicago, near our headquarters, last year. This one is the size of a shipping container, it's steel, it's actually stainless steel. We're actually going to be building these out in the Dakotas for Continental Resources, so these are on four wheels, last one was six. So you can see the width is different, and then this is 40-foot. Next. So this is where we want to be. These are being built right now ahead of your North Dakota. These, this is a similar basin, but now it can fit in a shipping container. Obviously, it has an opening for light. Algae actually can live under sea ice in the Arctic, so it doesn't need that much light, just needs enough to make photosynthesis. So work camps in North Dakota, and we're also doing the campgrounds at hotels, which are doubling as work camps right now, which isn't sustainable. And then the big thing is landfill leachate. I was... Well, that's weird.
Are those containers expandable?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, they can fall down there. Decide to crash. No, that's weird.
Is this, so far as you know...
We can take some questions when we try to reset.
As so far as you know, is this the same equipment that PCE is also considering, do you know?
It's unlikely I developed this with LG Wheel for our work. We actually, we're using it for digesting, so that's digesters like we have in the Algenac plant. So it's a really potent nutrient load, and we lower the nutrient load, but we don't necessarily get it to the limits, but it reduces costs at a big treatment plant like Fox River. So that was a one-of-a-kind. And then the ones that are at the Bakken are also especially designed for Continental Resources. And...
So you're saying that this, this equipment would be different than what PCE would want?
I don't know what PCE would want.
You don't know?
How many LG Wheel plants are there?
I want to say there's about two dozen in the United States.
Yeah, not many.
Probably over 30. And then there's about the same amount overseas.
Well, two dozen is 24.
Yeah, between 25, 30 in the United States.
I thought it was less than 20.
I've got one being constructed right now near Mount Rushmore, and he'll say...
I just wonder, I mean, with this big country we have, if this is such a great technology, you've always questioned it. There's only 20, there's not even one, enough for one per state. So I mean, I just wonder about it.
Well, so Chris Lomcakow developed the technology in 2015, so it's only 10 years old here. So that's not too bad for new technology to get three in a pipeline.
I mean, if it was that great, I just thought there'd be more.
So I think a better question would be, what's your rate of construction on these LG Wheels?
I'm doing myself. I'm probably doing one a year, one, two a year. They're probably doing three times that.
Do you have an idea what the maintenance costs are for these?
Yeah, so we do a full life cycle analysis, so we would provide that, and that's a big part of the...
Is that in the slides?
Yeah, it's coming up.
Maybe you just have to, have Tanya put it online.
Sorry about that, technical difficulty.
You can use my computer.
Yeah, we'll give it one more chance. So the part of the wastewater, so this is a schematic of a wastewater treatment plant And so the LG Wheel is really just this part right here. And so, you know, there's more parts to a treatment plant than just the LG Wheel, which we call secondary treatment, right? And so that's where denitrification, and in our case, with LG Wheel phosphorus removal lab. In most plants, phosphorus removal happens using chemicals. And so one of the advantages that we had proposed and wrote into the appropriation was that we don't use chemicals, which creates more solids. We, that the algae itself, you know, consumes the phosphorus because it's a plant, and it brings it down to your limits, which is 1 milligram per liter, which is the common limit in this area. Of course, when the flow comes in from the users, it comes in and goes into some kind of tanks, primary solids are created, and then when it leaves, there's secondary solids, a lot less, of course, that enter. So you still have, will have solids, and it's just going to be significantly less than pumping and hauling. And that really is what is a big part of the value engineering process, is knowing what's next, what's the provision next, because, you know, you want to be able to get it so that those solids are not... And that really is what is a big part of the value engineering process is knowing what's next, what's the provision next, because, you know, you want to be able to get it so that those solids are not ending up trucked off the island. It's a unique situation, and so there'll be a part of that in the decision process. That's why it's important for us to have that ability to determine what we do as we move forward in future steps.
Is that conducive, is that conducive to all algae wheel, that system?
Yes, that is common to all algae wheels, and all RBCs. I built two RBC plants since I left, which are similar, rotating biological contactors, just wheels, but with no algae growing on them. Next. So this is just a quick one-off. So like I said, our value engineering process was really put into wastewater in Pennsylvania. So this is a small plant for the magnitudes that we normally deal with, 500,000 gallons per day. It exceeded its design life. It was in Bath, Bureau, Authority, Pennsylvania, near Pottsville. Notices of violations, we did a alternative analysis, we did a, did a lifecycle cost analysis, that's your long-term operating maintenance cost. And then we recommended a new SPR, that's a sequence batch reactor. So that's where it batches different, it, it does a batch, treats that batch using aeration, and lets that batch go, and another batch starts, and they alternate. And so that was done for O and M cost reduction, and so $11.8 million was that 500,000 gallon per day plant. So if you were thinking about a 10,000 gallon per day plant, that's kind of what you'd be looking at, right? If you were to go one for one. Now, obviously, we're going to try to do better than that.
So what is that 11.8 million funded by USDA?
Uh, it's rural development.
Yeah, I know, I know what it is, but how, how did that come about?
Uh, we applied for the funding.
Okay.
Uh, next. So this is your turn.
All right, so again with the value engineering, we pride ourselves on the construction phase of not just building what's in the drawings, but making sure we build it right for the end user. So we take that all the way through and, and value, you know, again, with contractor, they have some opinions or things like that that can help, or we see it through and make sure the tool is the right product for the client. So, um, so with that, um, you know, we can take different kinds of approaches to deliver the project, um, and working on the, the best contract that fits the need. So that might be like a task one, negotiate with the general contractor for reflection system, um, and then it goes into a task two of joint alternatives, identification and analysis, so figuring out again what were steps maybe we need to think about for the long term, or, you know, other things that will really help, uh, future-proof the project. Um, and task three, just implementing that, that plan, that most cost-effective solution that delivers the right thing to the right people.
Carl's turn, you want to say a couple of words? We have three spots for you, Carl.
Carl, based from DDM Utilities, we are partnering with Fennec in this endeavor, and the local contractor specializing.
Are you with DDM?
I'm with DDM Utilities.
Hard?
DDM Utilities.
Okay.
We would be the contractor, uh, building the vast majority of the infrastructure for this project as we move forward. Uh, we currently have two other projects with Platoon Ship right now for sewer rehabilitation. So we're familiar with you and hopefully you with us. Just basically, uh, you know, this project would involve some directional drilling on the island, minimal disturbance to the infrastructure that's already there.
Did you have anything to do with that $1.4 million quote?
Yeah, I did.
You did it? And, uh, you know, I, uh, I didn't see a breakdown of it. Do you have a breakdown I could look at?
We certainly provide that.
Yeah, I'd like to see a breakdown.
Absolutely.
Do you feel that, uh, you don't have to put any peers in or anything, or?
I believe so.
No?
What do we have in the Harson's Island fund right now?
Huh?
What do we have in the Harson's Island algae wheel fund right now?
Oh, I don't know.
From, that's leftover from the grant?
So.
I think we have about one and a half million, right?
Yeah. We didn't even cover that one. It couldn't be in there.
Looking for it.
Ending balance is 388,000.
We only have 388,000? That can't be right.
You might have more.
Yeah, plus another, I think, million on a grant.
Oh, money, so we got about 1.4.
Just to let you know, we're in the rural development, you know, yeah.
You know, the numbers that we provided are preliminary, so it means we don't have a set of plans to work on.
Talk to John Monti about that. He doesn't think we can qualify, and he was explaining to me about other problems in other rural areas. But that was his opinion, right?
Yeah, I'm going to tell you why.
Well, I think, having talked with Senator Hertel, that he's, he wants to get an idea exactly what this will cost, and he feels he can get, he's going to try to get the balance of what would be needed to do the job. Hopefully have Eagle wave the wetland issue. We've been working on that, too.
Yeah, we still haven't got the permit yet, right?
It's right here, it says 1.7 million.
Four or five years.
Says 1.7 million here on my sheet, Jerry. But he's saying 1.4, I don't know, the numbers are, can't be right.
Did we cut you off? Did you, there's more to go?
Oh, there's a few more slides, yeah.
Go ahead.
So along that value engineering thought is contract operations. So in our Detroit office, we actually have several pilot license operators on staff. We've got some Class D licenses, some larger distribution licenses. So with that, you know, we would want to design a plant that we ourselves would feel confident operating, right? So we would want to make sure that there's, it's not just, again, following the plans, it's what makes the most sense, what will help, have belonged the operations of this facility. So, you know, beginning with the end in mind, right? So knowing how we want to operate the plant or things like that, that would help through the whole process of this.
Anybody mind if I just say, that number you came up with, Jerry, doesn't include just still 300 and some setting with, it's already been eight.
Oh, that's right.
So it's, we got about 1.7, 1.8.
Yeah, yeah, Maureen, talk that up.
Yep, okay.
So with that, I'll bring on Kevin. He just wants to say a few words from algae wheel. Can you hear me? Yep, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I won't take too much of your time. Thanks for having me. Um, I'd just like to say from the perspective of Kevin McGraw and algae wheel, we've been working with Anthony for a long time. Uh, we've been developing new algae wheel platforms, presenting at conferences, developing new and alternative methods, and, uh, we have a lot of confidence in Anthony's ability to, uh, deliver this type of equipment. Anything else, Anthony?
So Kevin's calling from Missouri, or Montana, so.
Montana.
Yeah, Bitterroot Valley, Montana. I don't know if anyone has any questions for Kevin. I've been sitting in there.
Does he answer, or do you answer the long-term cost analysis, all that?
Uh, they asked about the LCA.
Maintenance and.
And how we figure out the operating maintenance cost.
Our chief technology, the CTO, does all that. I can provide an LCA, but I, I don't really have the details to dive into right this minute. I mean, if you look at any, the big part of the LCA around ours is with air in comparison to SPRs and, and MBRs. And just to give, I just quoted a job today, um, that an MBR had 100 horsepower, excuse me, 100 horsepower blowers, and our blowers were 10 horsepower. So we're at least 10x, uh, lower on the cost of air supply because we don't, we don't need , um, air to turn, the air, the only RV is to turn the wheels. So, uh, air demand is a huge savings, and when you look at most of our plants, um, basically the savings in air alone will pay for the operator's salary.
And sure, answers is that obviously we need to come down to a size, and so that, that is a part of that process.
How does air work in this? I'm not familiar with that.
Aeration?
How does that, is that for aeration?
So the wheels turn because there's air bubbles that are underneath them. There's no motors.
Okay.
So normally in a rotating biological contactor, there'd be motors, an electric motor, and it'll turn the wheels. In algae wheel's case, those wheels are light, are very light, and so air can turn them on their own. Um, and then you, using a control system, you can ramp up or ramp down that air at different times in the day, which are when it's less, for example, peak demand, right? It's the most expensive electricity.
So you have to have somebody there to do that, or?
What's that?
That done manual, or?
Uh, it's all done by automation.
I mean, we've been told we don't have to hire an operator, it'll pretty much run itself. Somebody will just go check on it once or twice a week. Is that any accurate? Are we going to have to hire a person and pay? I mean, for the.
You know, so the regulatory agency, Eagle, will require a licensed operator to be responsible for the system. So that's the person who's taking, he's taking the blame if there's something wrong, and he's taking the credit if it's right. And, uh, but the automation allows for the minimal amount of hours, um, at the plant, that you still need to be there. I mean, you still need to come once a week, you need to come regularly and routinely. And that's something in the design, there's, there's different parts of that lifecycle analysis. So like Kevin's side of it would be things like energy cost, or, uh, cost for replacement parts, or things like that.
Are there supplies that we need to buy?
Yeah, not really, because there's no chemicals used. Uh, but then there's the hours, right? There's the, you know, us answering questions from Eagle regularly, us taking, reporting the samples. So there's an engineer, operator side of it, and then there's the manufacturer side of it, right? So there's two sides of that operations.
Just need some ballpark numbers, you know? I know how much it's going to cost long-term because everybody's like, this is free, it's a grant, but.
So we, we made a little, uh, I guess, faux pas because there's a word feasibility study, and that's not really what we were presenting. We were presenting that study that gives you those answers, right? So that's that initial study that's, that's budgetary in nature, right? So we, we actually kind of know what we're going to design. I mean, I know I can deliver it to the, to your budget, right? But it's what will that configuration look like, right? And how well will that set yourself up for the next phase? That's the questions that need to be answered.
Is that the 300,000?
And then those sizes, great budget.
Is that the 300,000 we talked about last time? 300,000 to do a feasibility study?
No.
No, no, no. We did 20,000.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a small, small nominal thing, but it's our time, right? And we have to work with the contractor, we have to jointly come up with those things that are going to help you get your budget. So it's just recouping our time.
I don't have any more, is anybody? What's your timeline on, uh, have a timeline or anything for how long this would take approximately, or?
Uh, we could probably accomplish the, the budgetary study in about six weeks, maybe less.
Everybody equipment over there now? Harson Island? Nothing?
We ordered it, put a down payment on it.
Yeah, that's the other thing. So you do have a down payment with Salzberg Knowles, which is a representative for algae wheel. Algae wheel and Salzberg Knowles have both been, I work with them all the time, and they've been gracious enough to say that's a credit towards what you're going to use on the island. So be it whatever configuration ends up being. Salzberg Knowles makes all my panels for South Dakota because it takes me 10 times longer to get them there.
I think we should try to get some more numbers, and also try to get some numbers from Monti, who said he could have that done shortly. And then we would get numbers from you and make the decisions. That's the way I see it.
You think Jen wants to say anything?
And these may be totally different ideas, I understand that.
Yeah.
Your, your theory and the way you want to engineer it may be totally different from him, and I know that you can't compare apples with apples that way, but the bottom line is, what can he do it for? What can you do it for? And what are we going to get in the end? I think, I mean, I don't see any other way of doing this.
Right. So, so we'll only work on that if you engage with us, right? So we'll, we'll need to contract with the township.
Yep.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, I'm going to let Kevin go, back to.
Yeah, I think we're all set, unless you fellows have more to add.
No, we're, we're all done. Thanks, Kevin.
All right.
John's here, do you think he should?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we go to consent agenda? Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, with the board approved bills from 6/9/25, the in-between meetings, and the meeting minutes from the 6/9 meeting and the 6/12 meeting.
Support.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Unfinished business, M29 water main improvements, overall budget, project budget, M29.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the M29 water main improvement, including Harson's Island river crossing, the overall project budget. We had approved the bid, but we, um, didn't say in our motion that we were approving the overall budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I think we need a roll call. All, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Should we do a roll call because of the budget price?
Is it, is it a number?
Yeah.
Oh, well, go ahead, do a roll call.
Okay. Bev Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to Harson's Island Fire Department purchase of five new overhead doors. Line 206-000-933.01 fire doors.
I make a motion to approve the Harson's Island Fire Department purchase of five new overhead doors, 206-000-933 line.
Support.
So is that for the, uh, weatherproof window and door for 13?
Yeah.
China 196.
He's giving us a.
Well, we can pick which one.
Right?
Oh, yeah, I was going to.
I provided you with three quotes, and, uh, the companies are Eminem, Eminem, and they have a Haas commercial door, and an FJF, um, and Weatherproof have the CHI door. Um, all three doors are, are valued at 17.54, which is a thick door. It's, it's a polyurethane, um, uh, insulation in it. And they all are full view, and I provided you folks with pictures of the full view, uh, what we'd like to put in there. That way it'll allow more light into the bay floors versus the smaller ones are like a 12 by 24 window, um, uh, in the doors now. Uh, and the doors that we have now are like 46 years old, so, uh, they were installed, I believe, when the building was, uh, built in 79. They all have a 10-year warranty on them. Uh, one year on installation. Now, uh, Weatherproof, he's local, he's a local, um, contractor, um, and he does, uh, good work.
And you got FJF.
Was it FJF?
FJF was 341. Weatherproof is 329.
And then MGM was 38,000, or, yeah, 38.
So I'll amend my motion to approve, uh, the bid from Weatherproof Window and Door.
Second. All right, discussion, uh, roll call.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
And Bev Rose?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, George.
I'll call 1A, is Deputy Supervisor, Assistant Assessor. We split that into a decision on Assistant Assessor to begin with. Ms. Restivo is here present if anybody would like to ask her questions, but I am requesting that she be hired as an Assistant Assessor.
I think we did that backwards.
Pardon me?
We got to do the Deputy Supervisor first, the way the motion was...
Oh, well, if it is that way, if you want to do it that way, that's fine. I just figured that we're going to do it either way, so we can do it as a supervisor, and I'd ask that she be compensated the same as the other deputies. If anybody has any questions for Ms. Restivo.
Well, if she can come up and say, have an experience, and tell us what, what she can do for the assessing department, and what kind of experience you have with assessing residential properties, as well as commercial.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Restivo. I have, are we talking on both positions at this point?
Go ahead.
Okay. I've been a contractor for 30 years, and I've worked in many different facets as far as commercial and residential. I'm a Realtor, in my fourth year of real estate. I've worked with many different departments, doing, for instance, community town centers for children, theaters, and, you know, different things, doing with communities. I primarily do design and installation for high-end commercial properties right now. And my real estate experience, I think, gives me the edge on the tax assessing and the property management and all those sort of things. Deputy Supervisor, my interest with that is to help the community, help all of the trustees, the board members, to be able to foster a better community and work in different areas that I'm set to. So I think those are things that I'll learn along the way. I presented my resume for everybody, so that they could see my experience. I've been a volunteer firefighter, EMT. I have worked as a general manager in a Lenscrafters optical situation. I worked with public for 30 years. I have a really good way to work with different personalities and...
Do you have any other experience with township or city assessing properties? And basically, with the Board of Review?
So the, the main things that I can say as far as working with townships is working with projects. So if I'm working with building departments, and inspectors, and along those lines, and having to work and present within boards to why we need to put a particular building in a space, and things like that. So, if that answers your question.
Is it your plan to go get certified immediately?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. I, I would want to learn every part of that particular, you know, it's not something that I've done in my history, but it's definitely something that I'm, you know, going to do every sort of part that I need to make sure that I have the certification for the role.
I think you have a year to do that, is that right?
Yeah, it has to be done as soon as possible. It usually takes like about a year, I'd say, to like get through everything.
Or sooner.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know how long, what are the classes to be certified, but I've looked into that.
Do you think it's going to be difficult, taking on two new roles at the same time? Because like the assessing department is a lot, and then, you know, taking on the duties of a Deputy Supervisor, you know, my biggest concern is doing both roles at the same time.
Right. I can understand your concern with that. What I would say is that I'm great at multitasking, I can do many different roles, I'm very fast at what I do, I'm a quick learner. I read efficiently, and, you know, I, my real estate exam, I took the classes, I, you know, had that done in one time, where other people, you know, take some quite several times to get their exam. So it's, it's going to be a, a learning process to do both roles, but I think that I have the capabilities to do so. I've sat and I've talked with Paul one-on-one, and as far as, you know, my skill sets, and I feel like I can offer a lot to this township.
So we're still on 1A, assessing?
Deputy Supervisor.
That's Deputy Supervisor.
1A?
Yeah, 1A was Deputy Supervisor, 1B was Assistant Assessor, which is just the way they...
I mean, we already have a full, you know, we have Bonnie, so she's the assistant, so, you know, most, everyone who's a deputy here, they work another role too, so I think she could handle it, but at first I'm sure it's going to be a challenge.
Well, this, this is a little different. Are you familiar with Michigan Trustee Association?
I'm not at this time, no.
He's talking about Michigan Township Association, there's not a trustee association.
So there's a lot of regulations in that manual from the Michigan Township Association, one of them is statutory duties, which would be assigned through the supervisor. And you can't go outside of that parameter. If you do anything that's outside of that, the stuff that he does, that'd be a complaint. And you'd be in violation of that particular item, and that could be a heavy fine. So just want to make sure you understand that.
Well, I think all of those things I'll learn along the way, and I'm looking forward to doing all that, and, you know, I have no problem abiding by any ordinances, or, you know...
You'll tell her what to do, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't think the concern is, like Paul telling her what to do, I think the other concern is the assessing department getting the proper support they need in that department.
Yeah, that's my...
They're two very big jobs.
But he's talking about the MTA, that's, that has to do with the Deputy Supervisor.
When you're talking deputies, the deputy covers in case Paul can't do the job, you know, just like Anita, if I'm in the hospital, she's acting, she's acting treasurer.
Right. The only difference with that, Jerry, though, would be Anita's the Deputy Treasurer in the Treasurers Department, Janet is the Deputy Clerk in the Clerks Department.
Right.
Where this position would be Deputy Supervisor, but it would be an Assistant Assessor, which is a full-time position. So are we going to rob from that full-time position to do the Deputy Supervisor work?
The Supervisor is the head's assessor.
I, I understand that. But let's, let's be honest, though.
Are we robbing from the other departments?
Our Supervisor does not do any assessing work.
Right, I understand, right.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. She's going to take the classes, and she will be, I think it's going to work hand-in-hand once she becomes certified. I really do.
I don't think we're robbing from the other departments with being the deputy. I mean, because I have other duties.
Well, I'm just saying, her full-time position is going to take a lot out of her, she's going to just have to spend some added time as a deputy, that's all.
Is that something you want to do, Cheryl?
So you're saying it's above and beyond 40 hours?
It may be, it may be.
May have to come in on Fridays or something.
Is that going to be worth $10,000 a year?
Well, it's just a matter of keeping it consistent with the others, that's all.
I mean, Paul took a pay cut of 40 grand, so, you know, over 40, 60 grand, so if it's 10 grand, I mean, he took a pay cut.
Yeah, I've already saved 30, 40.
60.
Yeah.
We already used that money.
Well, I'm...
I know you did.
I think, and Paul and I discussing different things, is that, you know, I have no problem stepping up and adding more and adding value. We discussed the salary for the Deputy Supervisor position, and he had presented a different monetary value for that position. And that is where I do believe that it is worth the extra amount, so that I am working the extra hours on a Friday, or in the evening, or on the weekends, or being present when Paul can't in certain situations. So, you know, that's something that I think that it's just a wait and see, and see, you know, I, I, how the, both positions lay out. Obviously, I can't speak to how the assessing role is, because I'm not in there. And until we get to that point, and then I'd just like to fill the roles, and then we can always, you know, reevaluate later if need be. My, my, my goal is to be of use and of service for the township, to be of use to all of the board members and the community.
You're a member of the township?
Yes, I do.
She volunteered at the ICE party, and pretty much did almost all of it, and got us a lot of free swag from the wings, red wings.
Worked that hard.
Yeah, she put together like, whole spreadsheets of when people were going to work, organized the whole thing, all...
I didn't sleep for a week.
Yeah.
And that was free of charge, so...
Yeah, you did that, just out of the goodness of your heart.
So I'm above and beyond type of person.
I saw your organization in that, it was very impressive.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess my only other thought too would be on the 10K. Nothing against Ms. Restivo, but we've got two people there in deputy positions now that we're paying that number, with many, many years of experience, so...
And full-time. For now.
I'm just saying, to come in unexperienced, it's, it's...
That's why she would come in at...
Well, she's going to work overtime.
As an Assistant Assessor.
I think it's like any... That's separate from the stipend for the Deputy Supervisor, they're two separate. I think it's like any role.
The way I looked at it originally, fellas, was, you know, I was saving $40,000 by not doing it. I thought, well, if I had a deputy for a $20,000 stipend, which I don't think we ought to use the word stipend, it shouldn't be that way, but I thought, well, that's, she's doing the sad and work for that, but now, you know, having talked to other employees here, and their stipends are 10,000, I thought, then we should stay regulated at the same, same value.
Right, and, I mean, like...
So that's the way I looked at it.
You, you saved the, you know, the 40,000, and then also the health benefits too, so even more.
Well, just speaking to the fact that we're talking about if there are hours above and beyond, where the other people that are doing the roles are actually within the departments themselves, so... They do go above and beyond a lot. Oh, of course. Oh, I'm sure, of course. They are there all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's not discredit, let's not tie in... Right. No, and I'm not in any way. Discredit anybody here. No. I think that when you take a lifetime experience of just different things on my resume, all of those put together can be a benefit, and it's just, you know, when you have a supervisor role, you know, Paul Cassidy does everything from, you know, figuring out how to provide services for the township, to providing, you know, the budget concerns, and speaking with everyone at the township, and, you know, there's many different hats to that. And so a lot of the things on my resume will allude to that, so I understand both points.
I mean, she has years of experience. We hired an assisted building person at 21-years-old, who had no experience whatsoever, other than building her house.
Well, I can tell you that by being on the Board of Review for 10 years, real estate agents is, it's a, it doesn't matter.
And I think these two positions...
They tend to give false information to the citizens, and we spent the majority of our time educating them.
And I don't think you can compare the building assistant position to an Assistant Assessor, they're very different things.
I think it's just a matter of...
There was no experience, is all I'm saying.
Bringing out, there was no experience.
And there was years and years, you know, she's...
I mean, when Bonnie was brought in, did she have any experience when she was an Assistant Assessor? Tanya? I don't know. As long as she got her certification.
I think she did.
Right, she did. And now she's our assessor. So I mean, it's the same scenario here.
I think too, going through the certification to get the licensing for the assessing position, also will give a wealth of knowledge to qualify me to be better qualified for the position. But, I mean, my goal is to be of service to the community, and this is one way that I can do that.
Any further questions, anyone? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
We have a motion on 1A?
I'll make a motion to hire Cheryl Restivo as Deputy Supervisor under Supervisor Cassidy, at the same pay level that we're paying the other assessors or other deputies.
Support.
So is that going to be what we're going to pay in the new budget year? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, however we work it.
I think that's what you meant.
July 1st.
Whatever's the new...
It's in the budget.
Value is.
Do you have the dollar amount?
I think it was $10,000.
Yes, $10,000.
Because we're increasing the others too, right?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Jerry seconded it.
I seconded.
All right, we take a roll call.
Okay. Roll call, John DeBoyer?
No.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
No.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
No.
All right, we'll go to the next issue of hiring Ms. Restivo as an Assistant Assessor.
I'll make a motion to hire Cheryl Restivo as Assistant Assessor full-time to Bonnie Campbell.
Second. Any further discussion?
So what does this position pay?
I think it's 39,000, isn't it?
You're just shy of...
Should we come in?
38-something.
She comes in at the minimum with the union contract.
This is a union position?
Yes.
Yes.
So minimum, come in 16 bucks an hour, 15 bucks an hour, or something, right?
And did we interview for this position?
Yep.
I, I didn't interview anyone but Cheryl.
Anyone but Cheryl?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you, Tana? Tanya?
That's, I offered to call him for interviews, but he's the department head, so I can't just interview, like, we have to do it together. So I asked if we wanted to pull the other two applicants in and do interviews, and he told me no.
Jerry, any motion?
I made the motion, and Jerry seconded it.
Oh, all right, we'll have a roll call.
One moment. Okay. Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Bev Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
No.
Mark Richard?
No.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We'll go on to new business, the regular SMUA updates and board meetings.
Yes.
Pardon me?
Okay. Yes. John, what I'm looking at in here is maybe once a month, like the last meeting we have of the month, just give up what's going on in the...
Absolutely. In fact, I could, I could bring you up to date right now, if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah. Because I get, I get people saying, for some reason, we got to work on that too, it's not on our website, and I have to tell people if they want to see it, they got to go to Algenax, so, you know, if you could give up...
That may be something we want to put on our website.
Right, exactly. That's my next thing, and I figured if you gave a presentation once a month, it'd keep everybody in the loop.
Sure. So since I've been in the position of not alternate the last six months, whatever it's been, we asked the authority engineer to do an analysis on the plant. They identified some issues as far as things that needed to be updated or upgraded. And so they broke that down by estimated cost, and they gave us some rough numbers. And there was several items on the, on the, on the list. But the biggest issue is what's called a weather retention basin, and that essentially is a holding area that gives the plant time in high-water events or high-rain events to, to put the water, and to not overburden the plant. And then there was a, a list of many other items, but the big-ticket items was, there was a secondary clarifier they recommended replacing, rehabbing the controls of the primary digesters, a new boiler, flow meters, and then some miscellaneous smaller items. So that number of all those items that they recommended replacement, this is an estimate on their part, came to around $10 million. Now, that doesn't include engineering, or contingency, or the other things that go with it. So in order to get hard numbers to determine where we truly are, we're considering having the engineers do hard engineering, so that they know what the numbers are, and then we can talk about whether we want to proceed with bonding, or how we want to handle, you know, moving forward, and how big of a project we want to make.
Is there any grants available for that?
Well, we'll look at that, but...
I know that...
It's tough right now.
Right, right now, I know it's tough. Okay.
Yeah. So at that point, we would know exactly where we stand as far as cost. We bring it back to the three communities and say, here's where we are, yea or nay, you know, do we move forward?
What do you, what do you think if we didn't do it?
Well, the, the plan is 65 years old. When it was under county jurisdiction, there wasn't a lot of things that were upgraded or updated. So there is a lot of things that it does need. You know, our thought was instead of piecemealing it, let's, let's float a bond and do it all in a relatively short period of time. So, I mean, it's a big chunk of money, obviously. But, and, and that too would be split by the three communities. Clay would be 35%. Ira would be 35%. Algenac would be 30%. So, so that's where we're at. We're, we're waiting for some numbers and then looking at options as, as far as moving forward.
I'm just curious. Do we have the number of how much we use, how much they use and so forth?
We do. Not only what we use, but what we're allotted at the plant. So...
Algenac's uses the most and they pay, and they pay the least.
Well...
30%.
We don't...
Are we looking at making up the same?
Yeah, but we find, we find Algenac though for doing that.
So...
But why don't we just do 33%?
And it could change over time.
It does. So, but keep in mind though, you know, we're in the middle of our sewer projects. Interceptor, small diameter lining, that's going to help our infiltration. Algenac sounds like they, with their rate increase, they're moving forward, going to do the same thing. But that takes some time to, to actually see results. So that's going to help. But there's still some things that need to be addressed, you know, relatively quickly.
What's your opinion of all this?
Well, my opinion is twofold. Number one, I know with the condition of the plant, and I would say that it definitely needs upgrading and updating. The other side of me says that's a ton of money. And, and I hate, you know, burden our, our customers with any more additional costs. So to me, it's a fine line. And we may have to look at it and prioritize and trim it down. But, but there, there is a few things that absolutely need to, to be addressed. So that's where we're at right now. We meet, oh, by the way, so we do meet once a month.
Yeah.
It's the third Tuesday of every month. It's entirely open to the public. It's advertised. It's posted. We have public comments. So anybody who wants to come and listen and pay attention or ask questions, they're more than welcome. So...
What time?
What is that?
It's 10 o'clock on, on the third Tuesday.
Where is that in?
10:00 AM.
Typically, I'm sorry?
What do you think about a timeline for all of this? Got any idea?
So there's an audit going on currently for the authority. We probably won't have that back until September sometime. We can't do anything until the audit's complete. If we do move forward with just the engineering process, that's going to take six months or whatever. So, because that was my big question. We're not budgeting for any of this this year. How do we, how do we plan for it? How do we pay for it? Most likely, everything would occur in next year's budget. So...
What do you, who would do the engineering, do you know?
So Fishback and Associates is the, is the authority's engineer. I'm not sure where they're out of. So they would do all the engineering. And then they would come back with, with costs and then obviously bid it. And then we would decide whether we want to proceed or not.
So we haven't made any improvements or anything. I know we bought a truck. We did some things right there, right? Did they buy a truck?
Um...
A pickup truck. I just wondered how the costs are compared now to when the county ran it, now that we've taken over.
Operational costs?
Right. For the authority, you know...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I didn't look at that.
Of what you're billing each... Yeah, maybe you could bring that back next time.
I'd have to look at that morning, to be honest with you.
All right. Send you an email about it.
That's where we're at.
Thank you, John.
Any questions?
The fourth or the third Monday?
You answer that?
Third, third.
Third Tuesday of every month at 10:00 AM.
That we're at.
Typically, it's at the sewage treatment plant?
Okay.
If it's, if we have maybe engineering firms or, or attorneys or sometimes we'll move it to Ira because they have a bigger facility. But it's always posted is, is where it's at, yeah.
It used to be in the Algenac back room, but...
They, they, yeah, it hasn't been there for quite a while.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay, we'll go to 1B Treasury, new hire, part-time deputy clerk, Brandy Brassfield, part-time treasurer clerk. All right, do you want to go?
Yeah. Before I became treasurer, they had a part-time that worked usually on Mondays and Thursdays to handle the overflow residents that we get for taxes and that. And we really haven't replaced the person that left us. And we got tax season coming up. So I think it's a good idea that we get that position open again. It's going to be a couple days a week.
I think that's appropriate. Do you have any, what wage?
With the part-time wage is 17, is it 17 something now, 17?
Yeah, she'll come in at like the base wage that's in the union contract.
Yeah.
How many hours?
Maybe eight.
So is this a union position then?
Yeah.
It's not union because it's part-time.
But that sets the wage?
That sets the wage, yes.
Eight per day, so 16 hours a week or four hours a day?
No, about 16 hours a week.
Okay. What do we say? Like, how about like 16 to 24 in case of vacations?
Yeah, because...
That position there has been forever, or I don't know.
And...
Yeah, that's another thing too. We got some vacations coming up with Diane and Anita.
And Brandy's, she's the Parks and Rec?
She's the Parks and Rec Director.
I'll make a motion to hire Brandy Brassfield as the part-time treasury clerk.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call.
Should we save working 16 to 24 hours or?
Yeah, I'll put it in the motion.
Brandy's 16 and...
16 to 24, she said.
Even if there's vacations, it could be a little bit more.
Couldn't leave it open.
What do you guys want to do? We could leave it open or...
Why don't we leave it open? Somebody takes a week off.
Not to exceed so many hours in a pay period.
Well, she wouldn't be, yeah, she wouldn't be able to exceed 30.
30 hours, right.
Because it's part-time.
Part-time, yeah.
Do you think we should set a minimum that she has to be in office?
I'd just say not to exceed 30.
Yeah.
I mean, you know what you need, Jerry.
Yeah. It's only going to be a couple days a week. So unless it's vacations.
If you get over 30 hours a week, you're part-time, you're full-time.
Yeah. So it's, it's gotta be less than, 30 or less, or less than 30.
All right. We'll do a roll call then.
Okay. Bev Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
We'll go to 1C. This is a casualty insurance renewal proposal. So we got one from Decker and we got one from Nicol and Saaf, our present provider.
And I have a third one, but he could that, get the quotes. So we break out the last minute.
Okay.
I believe Nicol and Saaf, don't you have multiple quotes for us?
Yes, we provided two quotes, but actually we have more carriers and we have two declinations as well. So...
You know, I'm just going to say I'd, I'd like to table this one meeting because I just...
We got a July 1st.
We have a deadline of July 1st.
We have a meeting on Thursday. Can we put it on that agenda? Budget meeting?
Because I would like to look at, I just got Nicol and Saaf's.
It's, was in the agenda packet since Thursday. You guys have all had access to it since Thursday.
Nicol and Saaf, they, they veiled out of the cyber, cyber policy?
I'm sorry?
John Johnson, Nicol and Saaf Insurance Agency.
Yeah, they said you couldn't quote it.
I'm sorry. A quote is in there for two cyber options that I presented. Actually, there's about five or six. But I only presented two options to keep it simple for you. Those options are with CFC for $500,000 of coverage and CFC again with $1 million worth of coverage. So yes, we provided those options for you.
What do we have currently, John?
You guys currently have zero cyber liability insurance. Yes. Would you...
I'm gonna say that, does that add to the end of the policy?
Okay. So I did not implement that into the initial cost of the policy as I read online. Neither did any other competitor. That basis point is for the $500,000 is $6,191. But the million-dollar option, which is the catch-all here, is for $6,879. So roughly $700 more, get $500,000 worth of coverage. Now, I did have a third option, which came in at $2,270, yeah, $2,275. And that coverage is not ample, or it's not the Cadillac product. It doesn't provide social engineering, e-crime, or those types of things. So I did not feel comfortable presenting that. I'm a certified insurance counselor. I'm a certified risk manager. These are designations above and beyond a regular agent that you have to be licensed by for the state. So coming to a board municipality like yourselves, I am not going to present something that I'm not comfortable with. So that's why if you see in the proposal there, I've only provided the two options with CFC as a basis points because they have critical components that are valuable to a municipality like yourself.
Now, our water main break.
Yeah.
Do you have coverage under this one?
You actually do. So what we did for you is I checked the marketplace everywhere. And actually, we are the providing agents for Macomb County. We're the lead providers for the South Municipal Utility Authority when they broke off from St. Clair County and became their own designation. If you guys remember back when Frazier had their sinkhole problem, we were boots-on-the-ground first people there for that. And the county came to the realization that they had no coverage for something along those lines. So we had to create a designated policy for that. And out of all of the municipalities that we take care of, about 80 to 90 in the state, not a single municipality other than Macomb County carries coverage for water mains that are underground and/or underwater. But what we did is we provided a product through Trident, which you guys had back in 2021 before we made the switch to PAR Plan in 2022, and then back to Nicol and Saaf in 2023 and 2024. Through the Trident product, we have actually added that water main onto what's called scheduled property. So there's endorsements that you can have, you know, coverage from 1,000 square feet from where your water main broke. But you didn't have any property that's with 1,000 square feet of that sadly. So there was no coverage. But what we did do is we tried to go and subrogate. So Jerry, you're aware of this term. Subrogation means go and collect money from somebody else. So we hired a investigator to come out. And we thought that we might be able to put it on some boat that was going through the water or something like that. But sadly, there was nobody that we could subrogate against. And there was no clauses in your current policy through Travelers. That's why we're doing a proposal by the company named Trident, which Trident provides the insurance for Algenac, Willby Clay, and Ira. Just to name some. So since I was brought up to speak about a couple things, I guess I will take this opportunity and speak about the company itself. As I said before, we take care of about 70, 80 municipalities. In that sense, we've been established since 1929. And going forward from there for the last 40 years, we've dedicated ourselves towards municipalities. Our product that we are presenting is two, well, $124,922, okay? That includes TRIA coverage. Now, with that being said, all board members, all employees, all volunteers, elected and appointed officials would be covered. One thing that was brought to my attention is limit of liability. The reason why I didn't provide more coverage or more quotes, excuse me, through Liberty Mutual is because they didn't meet that threshold of $6 million that we're providing. So Trident and Travelers both gave you the $6 million option. Liberty Mutual would have only provided that $5 million. So an extra million dollars on top is fantastic. Now deductibles, this is critical. We've changed your deductible limits drastically. What once was before $5,000 for public officials is now $0. What once was $5,000 for law enforcement is now $0. What once was $10,000 for auto liability is now $0. So all of your liability deductibles have changed except for general, which is still $2,500. We have changed your auto physical damage liability to $1,000. We have changed your property deductible to $1,000. All of these are decreases from what you had before because Trident values the relationship it had with you back in the day. And it wants to continue that relationship going forward. That's why they made an accommodation to put the property of water main on your schedule there. So it's actually included. No other provider, and these are, these are governmental providers in the United States, Travelers, Liberty Mutual. They don't just take care of Michigan. None of them will provide that. But Trident does.
Okay, question for you then.
Yes, sir.
Why did you switch us from Trident to...
Fiscally, let's go fiscally responsible. The prior board deemed it fiscally responsible to make the change. Now Trident has came in at a better premium price than Travelers. So again, it would be more fiscally responsible to make that change. We've heightened the coverages. We've lowered the deductibles. All things that make it applicable to a board like yourself to make the proper change to go with Nicol and Saaf and Trident.
So the $124,922 includes the new cyber and...
Does not include cyber. No, it does not.
Okay. So the cyber is 6,000, 61, 62 or 68?
Yes.
And then what about the water main? Is the water main in there?
Water main is actually included in that, yes.
All right. And what did we pay last year?
What did you pay last year? You guys were at $115,000, but that was before endorsements of new properties and new vehicles. And when you added on the new properties and new vehicles, you guys were at $119,952.
Who has settlement authority over your policies?
I'm sorry?
Who has settlement authority over your policies with these policies?
The insurance provider has...
Full, full settlement authority?
Yes, they do. As in any contractual obligation between a insured and the insurance company. Yes, it's always regulated towards the insurance company to settle if they deem necessary.
It's not always, but a good part of it.
Good part of it. Yes, sir. So what was brought up earlier about loss prevention and how we give back to the municipality, chief over there, we've presented multiple thousands of dollars, the police department chief, we presented multiple thousands of dollars, including a total of $19,733.24 for loss prevention. And that goes directly back towards the department itself for their relationship that we actually established and created back in the day with Lexipool. Lexipool is the leading provider of safety manuals and protocols and procedures for fire departments and police departments. And you guys have maintained that relationship since we started it. So every single year, you guys get a rebate for that loss prevention. And that comes directly out of the exact premium price that we're providing today. No additional costs are added on to that. You guys get a rebate immediately. Just to make sure that you guys are up to date with your policies and procedures, which we believe is critical of why you guys don't have any law enforcement claims or any fire department-related major catastrophes.
How much was that rebate?
$19,733.27 over the last four years. The one year that you guys were with the PAR Plan, we obviously could not assist you with that.
It was like four or five grand a year?
Relatively.
Now, are the companies you're quoting, are they putting together a policy or is it a policy that's tailored for a township?
It's specifically meant for municipalities. Trident only provides municipal insurance, their division. Travelers only provides municipal insurance out of their division. Glatfelter has a dedicated public entity, which they declined to provide a quote for sadly this year. Liberty Mutual did not meet that $6 million threshold. So we did not provide that. But they have a dedicated subsidiary within their firm to do municipal insurance. So yes, as I said before, Nicol and Saaf has dedicated itself to the municipal industry. Thus, we have found adequate and ample carriers that also do the same, have the same perspective of dedicating themselves towards municipalities. Yes. Relationships that we have, we conducted back in 2019 appraisals for all of your buildings. Under my professional opinion, as a Under my professional opinion, as a CIC and CRM, I recommend us doing that every 10 years. So that's not going to come back up until 2029. Every single year, we stick with inflation for you to increase that building limit or the contents limit that's within. So essentially, we've been keeping track, you know, one year we had 9% inflation, the other year we had 3% inflation. So we've kept up to date with all of those things and made sure that you guys have the proper amount and limits in those categories for you. I actually met with your individual that does the blight enforcement, he's your code enforcement. A gentleman was trying to hook up the screen here today and one of the points that I brought to him, I gave him my business card, told him to give me a call. We've got the access to MTA, Michigan Township Association. We're actually Keystone providers for those guys. And involving in that, we've made the relationship with Michigan State, the university. They keep a class going 24/7 for policies, procedures, and code enforcement up to date for your planning commission. I've taken the class twice. You guys could take the class as many times as you would like. It's free of charge. We will help you with that cost to make sure that your planning and zoning board is up to date with the proper protocols and practices of today's day and age. Just one or two more points for you. I was told that I wanted to make sure that I gave you a cost breakout of all the policy options. So within there is a cost breakout of the two options. I only talked about Trident because it's providing you with the best deductibles, lowest premium prices, and highest limits for the water main. What do I recommend for the future? You guys just passed a $8.4 million deal for the M29 water main. The best part about nickel and SAF is we're not just an agency that sits back and deals with you guys once or twice. We make recommendations for you on an annual basis. That's why we like to become best friends with the people that we work with. And in that sense there, I recommend that we obtain a builder's risk policy. And the reason why we want the municipality to obtain the builder's risk policy, not the general contractor or the engineer, is because as a municipality, you want the care, custody, and control of that policy. So if something goes wrong during those times, there's a malfunction and the equipment breaks down, there is a problem with the building and it gets blown over by wind, you want to be the individuals that make the claim, not anybody else. So as I do with all my municipalities, I read the last three to four months of the agenda meeting minutes and that sort. So I did that and that's one of my recommendations that I have for you guys. Another recommendation that I had was the implementation of the water main coverage through Trident, not with Travelers, okay? And when you guys complete this water main structure off of M29, I would like to implement that on your schedule as well. So then you have coverage for a break that goes underneath the water again, since we're doing those types of things. As a wrap-up for you, you talked about cyber and all of that kind of deal and stuff, alright? I just met with an IT company two days ago relatively and it was an online meeting. It was the only time that they could meet necessarily to help the municipality get in line with up-to-date problems that need to be implemented from an IT perspective. What does an insurance company look for when we're presenting a cyber policy? What kind of coverages do you guys need to have through your IT department? Well, we directly sit down with these IT people and tell them, hey, this is how the questions work. Would your municipality be interested in these things? And then it goes in front of the board of if you guys are actually interested in implementing them. Multi-factor authentication is a huge critical component of that piece right there. So may I answer any questions for the board?
And your construction, I'm going to call it a construction insurer?
Yes, builder's risk and installation floater, yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's the same thing in basic, if you're building a home, you get construction insurance.
Yes, sir. Yep, yep. So traditionally, some carriers will provide a million dollars worth of coverage, but if you have an $8.4 million project, a million dollars isn't going to be ample enough. So we go out there and we provide a dedicated one. A municipality of ours about 15 years ago was doing a water plant, actually, funny enough. And there was a big complication. It was a $120 million project that they were taking care of down in Wayne County. And we were the leading force of making sure that they had a builder's risk policy in place and they actually needed to call upon that policy for it. Obviously, I can't speak of premium prices and how much they got back or anything like that necessarily, but let me tell you that they were covered fully and they were able to revamp the costs and get the project done, obviously as a little bit of a time delay, let's per se, but still at no additional cost outside of that.
Why do you think you need that? If the contractor has to post a performance bond and everything, why do you think you need that?
Because the performance bond is based upon the relationship that they have the duty to perform the actual contract that you're stating. So you have a maintenance bond, performance bond, those two are totally outside the realm of a builder's risk or installation. That's the guarantee between that company and you that they're going to complete the job. Builder's risk means that if there's a occurrence, a peril during that, the company will get money for that occurrence. So you guys aren't high and dry.
Someone stole a trailer full of equipment while they were in there.
Yep, yeah. So, well, we actually, a great point for that performance bond and maintenance bond, I greatly appreciate you bringing that up, is the relationship that we have with intergovernmental contracts and/or contractors. On a day-to-day basis, regularly, I am tasked with reading through your contracts for municipalities to assure that proper language is within there, indemnity, hold harmless agreements, waivers of subrogation, non-contributory language, all the proper bonding, all the proper insurance contracts for general liability, auto liability, pollution liability, all of those things, workers' compensation to say the least. I'm tasked with making sure that they have those in line and the contract is up to date properly. And if it's not, it does not get a signature from me. So at that point, either the contractor goes back and purchases more insurance or they find a new contractor, because I do not let that go through. Again, with a CIC and a CRM license, I hold myself to a higher duty than just a regular agent. And I perform things that are outside just the regular agent's duty as well.
And workers' compensation, employer's liability is not in your quote though, is it?
It's not in any quote that was presented, no.
Can you just help with that?
Anyone further, anyone? Alright, thank you very much, John.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, John. We have someone here from Decker, huh? You have a customer?
Hi, everybody. I'll keep this brief. My name's Dustin Drebek. I represent the Decker Agency. We are located out of Portage, Michigan. I represent the east side of the state, just outside of Detroit and Lebonia. We've had the pleasure of servicing municipals for the last 25 years. We're fortunate to have 256 entities that we currently service in the lower half and the thumb of Michigan. Today, we've got a packet in front of you. Our total packet premium is in the back. As it was pointed out, we can provide a cyber option for you. Our million dollar policy starts out at less than $3,000 for the year. We could also provide you with a work comp policy quote if you'd like to see that as well. To kind of, not necessarily bore you or glaze over the details, we're providing a just over $20 million in overall property coverage. I have nothing critical or poor to say of, you know, what you currently have. I think that, you know, Mr. Johnson makes a good point in what he does and the professionalism he brings. The numbers that, you know, we got to review, we looked at and then, you know, I did tour the township and visited all the critical infrastructure to measure off the buildings and apply our price per square foot. We're also providing you with just over 2.2 million in the marine coverage. One thing that's, you know, can tend to be different from carrier to carrier is in the marine is indoor/outdoor portable equipment. So it could be things like play structure, your signs out in front of your buildings or light poles in your parking lot. Other policies also identify it as well. They just call it property in the open. So that might be just a slight difference in terms of the limits, just because we call it something a little bit different. We're providing over 2.3 million in overall agreed value on the fire trucks. I think anybody in our industry will tell you that the fire truck pricing is really wide open right now and seems to be changing every quarter. So that is something that we always like to work with department heads to get the, you know, best pricing through the industry leaders, not necessarily ourselves, because, you know, I think Rosenbauer knows a whole lot more about fire trucks than I do. So we like to trust their salespeople and what they like to put together. We're offering liability limits of a 1 million occurrence with a $2 million aggregate and a $4 million excess policy. That would give you a $5 million per occurrence. Your, you know, current proposal for you is six. Again, you know, we're, are we apples to apples? No. Are our apples that much different than this one? No. We're a full-service agency, you know, strictly dealing in only municipalities. We also have robust programs in terms of grants, risk control support, as well as, you know, like was pointed out, you know, some of the services that you already have in terms of grant assistance, policies and procedures. You know, like you said, most times I think you would expect somebody like myself in my situation to come up here and have a poor thing to say about the incumbent and I don't. I think that, you know, Clay gets treated well. There's a nice gentleman in the crowd. Oh, he's gone. You know, had nice things to say as well. And so, you know, from my standpoint, you know, there wasn't anything to, you know, look at what Clay's had over the last couple of years and sit there and say, you know, shame on anybody. I don't think that that's the case. I think that things have gone well and, you know, I was happy to participate. You know, speaking to Mr. Golka's question earlier, we provide line coverage as well. That's something that, you know, unfortunately, I've had some experience with in terms of situations of breaks and things like that. It's included, it's, you know, it's not anything additional that, you know, I'll be fair with you, I didn't have to go out and find anything, it's just included in our package. So with that being said, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Can you explain probably to the board, I'm sure they don't understand what the agreed value is?
On the fire trucks?
Didn't you say the police cars and?
No, police cars and I.
I know, we talked earlier.
No, I'm, Jerry, if I.
I've talked to so many people.
No, it's okay. You know, like you said, it all gets mishmashed. So we provide agreed value to fire vehicles. A lot of times, the word emergency vehicle is used. And in my opinion, emergency vehicle is also police, but in our insurance carriers verbiage, it's the frontline engines, pumbers, tankers, and ambulances. And so we provide agreed value to that. Now, we're matching the values that you currently have now. You know, however, like you said, that seems to always be changing. I just added an E450. It was $425,000, which was a good $50,000 more than the number I had in my head a couple of months ago. ACV is applied to all other vehicles outside of that category or actual cash value. We do start those vehicles though, all, everything included. So we don't separate the vehicle from, you know, the build-out that you would have on a police vehicle. I believe nowadays, you know, police vehicle build-outs can range anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000. So we start that ACV at a total build cost. So if, you know, you have an $85,000 Tahoe with a $15,000 build-out, you know, we'll start the ACV at $100,000, which is your total build cost, which would be lights and sirens and all your technology inside as well as your badging on the outside, so.
And then there was the, we talked about the insuring for a large amount, like let's say all the police cars was $5 million. So we do a $5 million coverage. So if that police car or that equipment went up in value, there's enough coverage there. Do you remember when we were talking about that?
Jerry, I'm not sure if that conversation was with me necessarily. I do apologize.
I don't know if it was police, but it was.
That conversation more or less sounds like what I'd be talking about with our buildings.
That's what it was.
Okay, so on the buildings, you know, when speaking of the building limit that we're providing you today, so you have the individual limits that we provide to each building structure, for example. So take this building. You know, Mr. Johnson pointed out, like you said, we are very much inundated with inflation and, you know, as a part of our job, we try our best to keep up with it. You know, sometimes costs exceed, you know, price per square foot. And so our blanket allows to, allows us to cover any additional expenditures that you may have in a building due to a loss. You know, for example, we dealt with the loss on the west side of the state where, you know, about 60% of the building was burned. The price per square foot on repair was $612 per square foot, which was easily $212 more than anticipated. So again, we were able to cover that difference with the overall blanket and the policy that we provide, so. But I will say this, you know, again, like was pointed out, and I always appreciate this from, you know, one professional to another, you know, having your buildings analyzed, right? That's something that we also provide free of charge. You know, I did go out and visit the buildings during the day. You know, again, you have nice buildings, you have well-conditioned buildings, but again, to, you know, get them looked at by a professional, which, you know, would be free of service to you guys, we'd be happy to provide in the event of. And again, it's a recommendation, it's not a criticism of where anything is at currently. It's just to give you a current understanding of, you know, price per square foot, square footage, and build-out or construction of your current situation.
So you do have a deductible pretty much for every section?
Yeah, except for the general liability. But yeah, when you, the general liability is a zero deductible. Law enforcement, I mean, like you said, I will say, you know, Mr. Johnson's deductibles in certain areas are more, better, well, they're better. You know, I have a $5,000 deductible on your law enforcement, for example. That's a carrier minimum that we have, you know, due to the book of business. You know, the general liability is zero, but, you know, then when you look at the other areas of liability that we cover, again, you know, same situation where, you know, we have $1,000 deductibles in some places and then we have $2,500 and they vary throughout, so.
We've seen a lot of 5,000 and 10,000.
And then, for example, like you said, we have a tier deductible on the vehicles. Depending on their value, you could trigger a 2,500 or a $5,000 deductible.
Interesting that your cyber quote is half. 3,000 versus 6,000.
I will say this, ma'am, like you said, you know, as Mr. Johnson pointed out, it wasn't, it wasn't something that you guys have had in the past. You know, that is, that's the high-end rough estimate of what we provide at a million dollars, you know, per entity. So again, it could come in less than that. The anticipation of it being higher is very minimal, but again, you know, we wanted to be prepared, but, you know, at the same time, like you said, it was, it was a line item of coverage that, you know, we always quote out for, but, you know, we might not necessarily include in the overall number, so.
Did you include it in this overall number?
I did not, ma'am, no. That backend number that you're looking at doesn't have cyber included. Like you said, if cyber was to be included, there would be a potentially, you know, up to another $3,000 included onto there, so.
That's 127,211 plus the 3,000 and if we went with.
Yeah, it would, I mean, it would, it would bring us into comparison of what you're, you know, you're currently reviewing in terms of, you know, the presented premium and then the.
Except the deductibles.
Right.
As far as values of the properties go, do you think you're in power with John?
I don't know, I, you know.
I mean, that would make a big difference. Yeah, I mean, that would make a big difference.
No, I, well, you know, I think that's a hard question to ask him or I. You know, we both, we, we write for different carriers. Our underwriters have different price per square foot, and, you know, I, I think that Mr. Johnson does his best to, to put the township in the best position possible. I think that no matter who we service and no matter who we're a part of, I think that's the ultimate goal. You know, being, again, not to put words in his mouth, being in a situation where, you know, we can't cover and assist, you know, that, that's hard. It's, it's just a hard position to be in, and we don't like to be there. And, you know, property has been a very hot topic for us for the last three years. It's something that we're constantly evaluating only for the simple fact that it's just moving so quick between labor costs, material costs, you know, as you heard from these gentlemen over here, you know, there's, there's costs associated over there. There's just a lot of things that go in that we try to stay on top of, and, you know, from my standpoint, you know, when, when, if a new entity comes on board with our agency, you know, we do spend, you know, a good tense couple of weeks with you guys going through things with department heads and going through stuff in a more detailed manner. You know, for example, there was only a couple of buildings I could get into, and that's nobody's fault. But I can't sit there and speak on anything, you know. I think that he does his best as, you know, as much as I try to do my best, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for allowing me to participate in this. I really do appreciate getting to know you guys.
For all your work, too.
Do you want any, uh? We have any motion?
July 1st.
Do you want to wait till Thursday to decide? So you can look at it more? Do you need more time?
I'd like to, but.
I'll make a motion to postpone the decision on our insurance provider to our next meeting, which is Thursday, this Thursday, June 26th at 10:00 a.m.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Go to 1D, the Funky case. I looked over this consent judgment and tried to figure out the situation because there was no exhibit attached, and I called PCE to get a copy of an exhibit, and I never got one from them. I made a couple of calls. Did you ever get one?
No, I didn't receive anything.
It appears to me from reading the judgment that they want to rebuild a house that's a little bit out of.
Let's see exhibit?
Yeah, let's see it. Where'd you get this?
Online. Tanya, it was on.
Well, okay, so you can kind of see here that this house, it's not a use variance or anything they're seeking. They're just saying, the old house used to be like right there, and we're only gonna encroach five feet, but I couldn't tell from.
So there is a, there is a survey here in our.
That's one I gave.
Is that what you gave them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could rotate it.
Did you, did you see the old footprint on here?
No.
I'm assuming, what do you think, Mark? Do you think this is what they're talking about, was the old house?
Yeah, that's what it's okay.
And it, and it came out.
I know.
Yeah.
It looks like Christine sent this.
So they were out to here, and they only want to come out to here now. But it still isn't a proper setback. I don't know why they can't do the setback, you know what I mean?
Yeah, there was some kind of agreement with the prior homeowner and the Funky that they could do that, and she was going to sign off on it, but she died. So that's what that was all about.
Well, it comes down to whether we want to enter the consent judgment, allow them to build in this location, or we don't.
Has any of the neighbors complained about it?
I'm not aware of any.
I think, I think the gal who looked her first sent some comment about that.
She was in favor of this.
Those cameras.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think our attorney Christine says this is a good.
This is what Christine.
Everybody agreed to?
Yeah, this is the judgment she sent us.
We're not re-deeding, like, because Sherry wasn't going to re-deed it, and we're still not going to re-deed it, but they're going to basically get to do what they want.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's up to the board if they want to allow it. Do we have a motion then?
Basically, what they're looking for is a variance from the setback? Is that what it is?
Yeah, that's what it is. It's not like a use variance or something like that, you know? It's just a setback variance.
I'll make a, a motion, 1D, Funky case proposed consent judgment.
I'll second it.
And that's a motion to approve it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Okay. Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
All right, resolution 2025, set salary of township trustees, resolution. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to set the annual salary of township trustees at 25,000.
How much?
I think it's 25,000, right?
25,000?
25,000.
For, for all five of us, the trustees, right?
Total amount?
Yeah.
I'm like, yes, I got a raise.
I was sitting there on the floor.
It's 25,000 for four trustees.
And then also.
That's what it says on the resolution, 25,000.
Should we do them all right, as we want to do them?
Oh, I thought it said 25.
The resolution says, "The Clay Township Boards shall provide an annual salary of $5,575, $70.25 to the Township Trustees beginning January 1st, 2025. The statutory duties of the office for the fiscal year until January 30th, in place of all per deem charges for services, plus $50 for any special meeting that is held on another night than a regular meeting."
I was thinking about the budget. Okay, I amend my, I'll amend my motion to set the annual salary.
I got it.
It's still a raise from last year, isn't it? That's 52.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Okay.
1G, resolution set salary of township supervisor, resolution 2025, 10, set salary, salary supervisor, 2025. Do you want to read what it is, Tanya?
Oh, sure, I can. Okay, so the supervisor's salary.
44,000.
Will be 44,000 for the township supervisor beginning July 1st, 2025, for the, performing the statutory duties of the office for the remaining fiscal year until June 30th, 2026.
You going to make that a motion?
I will make it a motion.
I support.
Okay. Roll call.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
All right, 1G, resolution set annual salary of township clerk. Do you want to read that?
Uh, yes.
Make a motion first and then I'll read it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to, to do, to set it?
I'll do a motion to set the annual salary of the township clerk.
Second?
I'll second. Yes. So the clerk's salary will be 66,000 starting July 1st for performing all statutory duties of the office for the remaining of the fiscal year, June 30th, 2026.
We're going to support, so.
So roll call, Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly, Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolution 1H, set salary of township treasurer. Motion?
I will make a motion.
I'll second it.
In the amount of $44,000 for the fiscal year, starting January 1st, um, until, or starting July 1st, until June 30th, 2026.
All right, take a roll call.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes.
All right, we have 1K. Uh, this was Lance's request to approve the lift station repairs.
This is to replace panels that have been in service for over 50 years, and the parts are getting no longer available. So what I would like to do is at least get a couple panels done right off the get-go here to where we can keep the parts as secondary issues for the rest of the stations while we're working forward to keep doing the change out.
I will make the motion to purchase, for the purchase of the new silver lift station panels in the amount of $56,610 out of line 590, 930.
Support.
Roll call.
Just one question, Mr. Supervisor.
Yeah, go ahead.
So these are, you, you're going to do three with these?
Yes.
Okay. And the structures are good?
The structures on these will be good, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're saying the parts are going bad, are we going to be able to, are we going to need more, more parts? I mean.
Well, once we get going on these three, we'll strip the panels that we're going to take off.
Okay.
And keep the Slim Jim relays, the safe packs. John knows what I'm talking about when I.
So you're going to part them out?
I'm going to part them out and put everything back in inventory until we get the other ones replaced at that point.
Great, thanks.
I know what you're talking about, too. I overheard the conversations.
Don't, no, that's not a problem.
All right, roll call.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolution 1H, set salary of township treasurer. Motion?
I will make a motion.
I'll second it.
In the amount of $44,000 for the fiscal year, starting January 1st, um, until, or starting July 1st, until June 30th, 2026.
All right, take a roll call.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
was no open public comments allowed, which violates HIDA by law 3.01. Here are just a few of HIDA's most deceitful moments. The first HIDA meeting was on July 26, 2020. The very first motion discussed the frequency of HIDA meetings. Quote, "Motion by Torino, seconded by Bain, to hold meetings on a quarterly basis." Motion passed 4-0, end quote. Next, on December 10, 2022, the following occurred. Quote, "Paul Cassidy made a motion to amend the HIDA bylaws to increase all HIDA board member terms to four years." Motion passed, end quote. Imagine being publicly unelected and able to vote for your own term length while the HIDA board can. From April 8, 2023, meeting minutes, quote, "Per Bain, moving forward, HIDA will adhere to the Order of Business Section 3.01 as outlined in HIDA's bylaws," end quote. This is yet another example of HIDA's blatant hypocrisy. The HIDA annual organizational meeting scheduled for March 9, 2025, never actually happened, and since the unelected HIDA board is accountable to nobody, I guess we'll never know why. But the greatest HIDA moment can be viewed by everyone. Simply Google "HIDA public hearing December 16, 2023" and watch the 51-minute mark of the YouTube video. Viewers will not be disappointed by HIDA's shameless hubris. HIDA Article 1 is a disturbing example of un-American injustice. It allows an unelected board of a tax-exempt organization to have jurisdiction over all island residents who do pay property taxes. Another example of devious politics is Article 4, Section 2, which clearly states, "Three HIDA board members are appointed solely by the Clay Township Supervisor and two appointed by HISCVA. Also, there are no term limits for HIDA board members. Furthermore, there is no method for island residents to replace board members when the board goes rogue," which describes the current situation. Lastly, it is pure tyranny that the largest HIDA expense, according to its own financial statements, is quote, "redacted," unquote, and that the HIDA chair can call special meetings with closed sessions, in which he can secretly purchase property and sign NDAs without disclosing any of this information to the island residents. In conclusion, I publicly request scheduled HIDA meetings resume. If not, HIDA Chairman Harold Bain and his vice chair should be removed due to multiple bylaw and meeting motion violations and for exhibiting character on becoming of a volunteer. They should be replaced by board members that actually serve island residents, not ignore or demean them. Otherwise, you might as well rename HIDA to HIPDA, since it clearly is the Harold Bain Transportation Authority. Thank you for your time.
Hi, thank you.
Hello again, Arnie Bryson, 8356, South Channel Drive. I actually want to applaud the board today because you guys, I think this is the best meeting you've had since, you guys have been in office since November. You've got some business done today. Let's see. I'm gonna ask again, I asked in the last meeting, it was quoted by the supervisor, that we're gonna bring OHM in and that's request of trustee Burchard to get a status update, and that was, what, a month ago? We still haven't seen that, have we, Mark? And another thing I wanted to bring up, I mean, no offense, believe me, the supervisor is in charge of the assessing department. So a deputy supervisor would be in charge of the assessing department, who, she'll also be the deputy assessor. So I think there's gotta be a understanding, a letter of understanding how that would take effect, if there is an issue there. And lastly, two meetings ago, Gary Bolak sent, I'm not sure if he sent the whole board or just Maureen, a message to be read in public comment, which she did. The meeting, last meeting, there is a business owner that sent the whole board an email wanting something to be read in public comment, and it wasn't. So either it's one way or the other, or I don't know how the board decides what actually gets read in the public comment. If it's something that Maureen likes, she reads it, but it shouldn't matter what the message is. Either you do it or you don't. It needs to be the same for everything. So, yeah, Gary Bolak sent you one.
I don't remember who sent one, asking it to be read.
Jake, my nephew did.
Oh, okay.
To the whole board. Enter it in public records.
But he didn't say read it in public comments.
Yeah, I think he was entering it in public records, so.
That doesn't say read it during public.
Okay, it's public comments.
It's public comments. You want to argue?
No, I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, but I didn't know.
So how does someone get it read? Because I've actually emailed the board to have something read in public comments, too, and it doesn't happen, only in certain cases. So it's gotta be one or the other, so. But other than that, I thought that today's meeting was pretty good, so. Thank you.
You have to say read it during public comments, and he didn't. Well, yeah, but Gary was gonna be out of town. Jake could come in.
Well, trustee Burchard had publicly stated at the last meeting that he does not know what OHM has done, what remains to be done, or why the township is paying them. The supervisor stated he believes OHM project is done, yet there has been no board-approved scope of work, no documented process updates, and no transparency with taxpayers about what is being done with public funds. There was an invoice for 40-some thousand dollars that was put aside because Mark wanted this information. Why is it not on the agenda today under unfinished business? Why, when I asked if the board would amend the agenda, is OHM still not discussed? Again, the facts haven't changed, the truth hasn't changed. Since I've emailed a full timeline to this board, clearly detailing as to how the illegal contract with OHM became a household name, signed outside of a public meeting and without a valid vote, in addition to evidence from FOIA's, none of you can honestly say that you don't know what's going on. This is fact, not speculation. Under the law, the township is not obligated to pay for contracts that were never approved in a public meeting with a valid vote. This wasn't oversight, it was deception, and paying OHM's invoices now is effectively rewarding that deception. If OHM wants to sue for payment, let them. Finally, the process will be public, and those responsible for this deception will be held accountable. So tonight, I ask each of you to choose action. At the next meeting, vote to declare the OHM advisors' contract null and void because it was never properly approved by the board before execution. If you vote to approve one more OHM invoice, if you stay silent, if you refuse to make a motion to halt payments and declare the contract null and void, then each of you are breaching your fiduciary duty. Period. End of sentence. Mr. Cassidy, you told me that if I thought you should be prosecuted, then I should let the government know. Well, is the Attorney Grievance Commission a government agency? Because I think we should start there. Thank you.
Hello, Bruce Swycart, representing San Souzy. Just, I don't know how to ask at this point, but the board to do something. Last time, at the last meeting, the $20,000 wasn't approved. To keep going, the gentleman here had put a lot of time in for free, and to ensure, something you brought up at the last meeting, Maureen, is that if we have to pay it back, the sure way of having to pay back any money is not doing anything, because it's just at a complete stall now. And John had said, and is he still here? No, John's not still here. Said within two weeks, he would have, and I've got nothing, and have you? So, I don't know, just the next step, to do whatever you gotta do. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. We'll go to board comments. John, did you say anything to him?
I'm good, Tanya.
Maureen?
I'm good.
Mark? We have a planning commission meeting on Wednesday, 25th, 7:00 p.m., right here, at this place. We'll be discussing existing building for public use. I think it's the old, what was that, John? The old IDWIDL. I'm gonna turn it into board revampit, revampit, I should say, and sign ordinances, and the master plan review. Thank you.
These are sign ordinances. Do they cover political science, too? Do they? These sign ordinances?
Political science?
Yeah.
Signs, political signs.
Okay.
Oh, really? Something looking, that wouldn't be in 26, though.
No. Tanya, anything?
No, I'm good tonight.
Mrs. Rose, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Jerry Golka?
Yeah, Saturday, our new Parks and Rec director and myself worked the Antique Boat Show, and the DDA helped fund a lot of it for us, and they came by today and gave us a nice little plaque for being a sponsor. We developed some nice little cards to give out. It gives a little bit of information about Clay Township, some fun facts, who the electoral officials are, just a lot of nice things. Then we gave away these little floaty keychains that say Clay Township on it, and it was a lot of fun, a lot of good comments from a lot of Clay Township people. We're hoping to bring people aware of Clay Township, to bring some new business in here, and also some new residents, so we can grow a community. That's all I have to say.
I'll do that one more thing. I just wanted to say congratulations to Cheryl.
Yes.
I think she's been a mixed well with everybody here and worked super hard, and I appreciate you coming forward for the community.
Did get a line on a new business that may be coming in, and I'm very hopeful they do, and we'll wait and see. That's all I have to say.
That was a tease.
Yeah.
That was a tease.
And we'll be happy with it, but we won't get to the Sensation Building.
Oh, okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn? I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.